I'd like to call the meeting order, please stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
I'd like to thank you for coming tonight. We are, because of time restraints, we had to table one of the decisions that we have to make tonight, so we have to go back into executive session after this meeting. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, public laws of 1975, this meeting is duly advertised as part of press issue of January 18th, 2013. All municipal clerks of townships and boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified and requirements of posting of notices have been met. Minutes' approval? Okay, communications on file. Report, superintendents' report.
Just a few items. I'd like to just observe a brief moment of silence for Senator Lautenberg, who passed away earlier this afternoon, longtime public servant. Thank you. We are going to open up this evening with a presentation from members of the Guidance Steering Committee, and Ms. Sharp will go into some of these details. But if you recall, one of our major thrusts within our strategic plan was to form a Guidance Steering Committee and to take a look at a number of the practices within our guidance department. I had met regularly last year with the guidance supervisors, who were very united in some of the ideas that they had for positive change in the guidance departments. And that steering committee has been working very diligently throughout the course of the year. And I'm proud to say that we have Mr. Carino, we have Ms. Gallo, we have Mr. Santasiri, and we have Mr. Padaki here representing the guidance supervisors. And I'll turn it over to Mrs. Sharp.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. Good evening, members of the Board of Education, members of the Administration, members of the Republic, we're here this evening. We appreciate the opportunity to speak to all regarding the work of the Guidance Steering Committee. This committee is required in the strategic plan, as Mrs. Johnson said, under Strategy 3. Strategy 3 asks that we build structures to guide students through the process of planning and achieving individualized goals, and that we conduct evaluations of counseling and other related efforts. I was asked to chair the committee, once being appointed to the position of the Director of Guidance and Operations in the fall of 2012. And using the strategic plan as a guide, we began a journey of reflection on our current practice within the area of guidance and counseling services here at the Pre-Regional High School District. Here you see a list of the standing members of the Guidance Steering Committee. And when assembling the committee, we really wanted to include individuals from all locations and throughout multiple levels of the organization, in the hopes that a harmony of voices would be represented at the decision-making table. In addition to the members that you see here, we will ask others to join our conversations from time to time and as topics shift. Ad hoc members such as the special education supervisors, the director of special services, and the district's communications and projects coordinator have been tapped to participate already. So, tonight, we are here to publicly report our progress to the full Board of Education and to inform the Board of some recommended policy provisions that will be presented for your consideration. Joining me in this presentation are several of our guidance supervisors. Mr. Anthony Carino, he's a guidance supervisor from Marlboro High School. We also have Mr. Paul Santasiri from Coltsneck High School, Mrs. Abe Gallo from Pre-Hold High School, and Mr. Arcat from Minell High School. But before I turn the presentation over then, I would like to go over some of the preliminary work that they helped to accomplish, and then provide an overview of the committee's work thus far, and finally to share with all of you some highlights of surveys and the research that we commissioned. So you see, in the fall of, throughout 2011, 2012, there was some preliminary work with the guidance supervisors, who took it upon themselves and worked with the superintendent to survey New Jersey colleges, and also some colleges throughout the Northeast, to speak personally with the admissions officers there, and to really gauge their procedures and ask them some questions about how they view GPAs and ranking and things like that. To get some more information and formalize the process, this past fall in 2012, the district reached out to the Hanover Research Council, and they conducted a literature review to look at what's being done, what the thought processes are around the country with regard to the way the grading systems. They also conducted a thorough college admissions officer survey. And I just want to let you know some of the colleges that participated in the survey. This is just a sampling. Albright College, the Boston Conservatory, Boston University, Brown, Bryn Mawr, Caldwell, Columbia, Drexel, Georgian Court, Howard, James Madison, Marymount, Penn State, Purdue, St. Joe's, the United States Marine Academy, West Point, University of Florida, Villanova, College of the Union Mary, and Belton, just to name them. So once the surveys were in and the literature review was complete, the committee really began its work in earnest. So in our January and February meetings, we had several of them, we met, we analyzed, we interpreted data, we also discussed at length each school's experience with dual ranking and with equal grading for the honors and AP courses. And really the details of how all of that impacted each school and each program. And it was clear, and there was consensus within the group, that we needed to make some renovations. So leaving that topic for a moment, we actually have continued on, and I just want to mention, in April, and again in May, we did actually discuss our next topic, which will be transitions of the work that we do to welcome our incoming freshman each year. So that will be the work that we will start next year. Okay. All right. And here are some of the major pertinent findings from the Hanover Research Council commissioned research and the survey that I mentioned. The first box talks about class rank. That rated second lowest in the importance among the college admissions officials surveyed. These officials were most likely to emphasize an applicant's academic record, particularly the difficulty of courses taken and the student's performance in those courses as opposed to where they ranked in class. According to surveys conducted by the National Association for College Admissions Counselors, which Hanover worked with, the class rank over the last couple of decades has actually been declining in importance, and in turn grades, strength of schedule, and admissions tests really dominate when they make a decision as to whether to admit students. In fact, class ranking and the SAT writing scores were designated as the least important factors to those respondents about making admissions decisions. And in fact, and I was a little surprised, 55% of those surveys indicated that class rank had no effect on the admissions decision. And those that indicated that it did have any effect at all had no preference as to the ranking method. So if you're looking at rank, the method that we would use has no impact on that. And this is borne out in the literature gathered by the Hanover Research firm as well. The less precise a student's ranking, the better off he or she is in the admissions process. Because this forces the college admissions counselors to really be more holistic in their consideration of a candidate's overall potential. Given the unique nature of our programs and the impressive caliber of a Pre-Hold Regional student, we feel that presenting rank using DESIls would actually be more advantageous in the admissions process. And I would like to leave you with a quote from one of these survey respondents. While we prefer a DESIel system, some high schools do not provide a class rank at all, and we have learned to operate effectively without it. And now I would like to introduce to you our guidance supervisors, who will provide an overview of the history and the current recommendations regarding ranking policy and procedures, as well as GPA rating of advanced placement courses.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Anthony Carino, and I'm supervisor of guidance at Marlboro. Dual ranking. Dual ranking came about in response to parental concerns regarding the imbalance of opportunity between students in the learning center who had access to a much greater number of AP courses and honor courses than other students who were not in the learning center. So, in a discussion that took place, I guess, amongst board members, it was agreed that there will be dual ranking. Now, let's get to the definition of dual ranking. What is dual ranking? We have two ranks that we send to colleges, and hence the word dual. All right, the first is the real, actual rank. And that's the rank that includes every student in the graduating class. Regarding the tailgates therein. The second would be the rank of those students extrapolating as taking out the learning center or academy students. So what happens there is it gives the students that are not in the learning center more of a balance, more of a way of competing with the class as opposed to those who are in the learning center. Now, the best way I can describe that to you is years ago, the learning center was considered to be a school within a school. And because of that, those students had much more access to AP courses than the honors courses that the other students did not have. Parents felt that the students who were in college preparatory classes did not have that advantage. And therefore, they started their ranking after the learning center students. And so it was considered an issue of fairness. And so dual ranking then became a reality almost 30 years ago. So I hope I gave you a good definition of what dual ranking is. I know now I can't see, because it's a blessing to have. Much better. Now, it sounds like with dual ranking that it's not transparent, but it is transparent. Always on our profile sheet that we send for every student in our life and college, we send a school profile, and in the profile we describe what dual ranking is. And given the definition I just gave to you, that basically is the definition, probably a little more convoluted than what I'm saying, because I'm trying to put it on, I'm using a lot of words, whereas on the profile you have to put it into smaller words. And so the issue is, again, we're being transparent about it, but at the same time, do colleges really understand what we're talking about? Since we seem to be very unique in the country as a school that utilizes dual ranking. So now, you're going to hear from other speakers who are going to say that because we've made additions to the curriculum, because we've added honor courses and AP courses, and the students have greater access to those courses than ever before, not simply those students who are in the learning center or academies, but every student has greater access, there's more of a balance now. And so the students who are not in the learning center are not at any kind of disadvantage. And in the past few years, depending upon the school, some of the valedictories actually have been students who were not from the learning center. So these students can now compete academically with the same quality GPA as those in the learning centers and academies. So I'm hoping I haven't confused you any further. But at this point, I'm sure Ms. Gallo from Pre-Hold Marlboro is going to clarify anything that I might have missed.
Hi, good evening, members of the Board, ladies and gentlemen. What I'm going to do is up here on this slide, you'll see the left-hand side of the slide has three bullet points along with the right-hand part of the slide. One being titled "Learning Center and Academy Courses", and the other "Non-Learning Center and Non-Academy Courses". I'm probably going to repeat a little bit of what Mr. Carino said, so just be patient, however, I guess hearing something twice is not necessarily negative. The breakdown really is threefold, as the three bullets say up there. One is opportunity, access, and ranking. Those are the three. And if you look at the learning center side, you'll see that many courses are offered for the learning center and academy students that are at the honors and the AP level courses throughout their high school career that are built into the program. That's what we mean by opportunity. The access is built in for them, and they are able to take courses that are advanced placement and honors earlier, freshmen, sometimes sophomore, where the non-learning center student in the past wasn't able to have that opportunity back early. That's basically what that slide is really saying up there. The non-learning center student had limited opportunity, and they had delayed access to the higher level courses due to the criteria that was set in place in order for the student to take the AP and honors level courses. Now presently, that has changed, allowing the non-learning center and the non-academy student to take those AP courses and those honors courses, therefore being able to compete at a higher level at the top with their class rank. I'm going to pretty much end on that note and have Mr. Santasiri come up, and he's going to talk about why we no longer need dual ranking. Here he is.
Good evening, members of the Board, ladies and gentlemen. Why we no longer need dual ranking? A couple of important bullet points that I'd like to point out. All students have access to honors and AP level courses throughout their high school career. The barriers to taking AP courses have been removed. As evident by, especially at Coltsneck High School, we saw an increase of about 33% in the number of students who took AP courses this year over last year. Last year, we gave about 385 AP exams. This year, we gave 626 AP exams. And I was, I think, the lone man on the totem pole. So the barriers have been removed. We are allowing our students the opportunity to do what they can and to involve themselves in the most rigorous course of study that they can take at the district. Comparable weighted coursework regardless of placement in the learning center or not. As you well know, we have now moved into where our academic levels in English and Social Studies and our honors levels in English and Social Studies are the courses that are offered at the freshman level, thereby allowing the students to advance at a greater pace. As well as the opportunity for students to do the individualized people learning opportunities. We have many, many students who now take advantage of the IFLO, we call it IFLO for short, because every time you say that, it takes about five minutes. So we have many, many students who take advantage of the IFLO, even to get their electives out of the way, financial literacy. We have students who take IFLO on financial literacy every semester, so they can go in and take more AP courses. Curriculum revisions eliminate a level of English and Social Studies resulting in more students taking higher level courses, I just mentioned that. Opportunity for support offered for first-time AP course stakeholders through our summer AP Bridge Program. This was a great program instituted by the district, extremely successful. Last year, we had 250 students attend the AP Bridge Program over the summer. They came in on their own over the summer, okay? To learn more about what it took for them to be successful in the AP program. And I know we're offering it again this year, and I'm sure just as many students, if not probably more students, will take advantage of that program. Present ranking system is confusing for college admissions officers as FRHSD is unique in this practice. Surveying college admission counselors, they see it as confusing. They don't understand what dual ranking means. How could you have two number ones? It doesn't make any sense. At our junior parent night, we had representative from Princeton there. And we spoke at Len about the dual ranking system, and she said, "We don't even look at it. We don't even look at rank. We take a look at the rigor of courses of study that that student has, its uniqueness, what the student has to offer to Princeton University. We don't look at that ranking, we just throw it out the window, we don't even look at it. We wipe it out." So, you know, I know that Mr. Padaki is going to continue, but I'm pretty much done. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Art Padaki from Minell High School, supervisor of guidance and counseling. To summarize our recommendations, we would ask to revise Board Policy 5430, class rank include elimination of dual ranking affecting the class of 2017. That's next year's incoming freshman, our current AP grad, so it will not affect any student currently in high school. We rank all students together, as Mr. Santasiri said, we wouldn't give one ranking with the number one at the end of the year, one ranking with all students from bottom, one rank together. We would still give out exact and DESIel rank, it would still be reported to the students, but as a district, we would just report the DESIel rank. Students would also still have the option of not reporting rank at all. DESIel rank will be reported on the student transcript. The DESIel ranking means that the student, the students in the graduating class are ranked in increments of 10%, top 10%, top 20%, top 30% of their graduation class as opposed to the exact ranks. For instance, if a student's ranked number of 48 in a class of 500, they could say top 10%. We want to position our students as best as possible to gain acceptance to the college or university of their choice. From the perspective of college or university, rankings are of less importance to academic ability since colleges see transcripts from thousands of schools around the country. A DESIel system would provide a more equal representation of students with similar levels of academic accomplishment across the line. Our other recommendation is to revise Board Policy Number 2624, grading system, to increase the GPA weight of all AP courses starting with the class of 2017 or incoming freshmen. And we want to recognize the additional level of rigor in the AP courses, additional quality points if they're taking the AP course to branch that from the honors level course as opposed to the students taking the same level of credit, obviously taking honors as opposed to the AP. We want to continue to encourage participation in the AP program. Factors are consistent with rank highs in terms of importance for college admissions. Again, grades in college classes, strength of curriculum, standardized statistics, SAT, GPA, and the overall GPA, not class rank. Given all this information, the Guidance Steering Committee feels it is appropriate to assign the advanced placement course additional weight in the calculation of student GPA. I don't know if you can just step through, Josh.
Good evening, thank you. Again, I'd like to thank the members of the Board for this opportunity to speak freely this evening. And if anyone has any questions as we perform these initiatives, as I said, some changes in policies will be coming your way, and we'll be available for questions at that time or now.
Okay. I feel a lot of the colleges and universities aren't looking at rankings personally now because of so many of our high academic high schools. I think that has a lot to do with it, because they're specialized high schools. Besides our learning centers, I'm talking specifically in the counties. And what happens is these kids are going in 200 in a class, and they're basically almost at the same level. How do you, how could you rank that? They know they're all coming in because they're academically, you know, being accepted in these schools. So I think that's another reason why the prominent universities aren't looking at the ranking as well. I think that as far as the students in our district that are not in the learning centers, I think they may have a little bit more of an advantage because they can choose other courses that may be AP where your learning center, they're limited to, because they need to have certain classes in that learning center. And they may have a little bit more leeway in choosing AP classes or honors classes after they're done with their. I mean, they're not, you know, set in a way that the learning centers are. So actually, that will bring up their grade point average as well, because they have advantages of taking more academic classes. And that's all. Thank you.
I have a question. Basically, I know these days, whether it's academics or sports, parents are very, very competitive, and they lay out this whole plan for their kids, and they're involved because they want their kid on this team, and in AP, and honors, and everything like that. So, what about the kid whose parents don't know all these things? They do really good in school, in middle school, they show up at Howell High School or Marlboro High School, they're really smart kids. What is the infrastructure in place to, or is there an infrastructure in place to get the kid into these classes, realize their full potential if their parents, you know, are out to lunch, not paying attention, don't know any better? How are they identified and then placed in the proper class?
Well, I'll take a stab at that.
I can help you a little bit with that one as well.
We are articulating very closely with the sending K-8 districts, so we get a lot of data about individual student when they come in. Every child obviously does have some experiences with their counselor early on, but we hold the aim to bring that information to the parents. And in fact, within the composite strategic plan, transition is actually something that we're working on next. So although we feel that we do a lot of things to get the information out there to make sure that every child comes in and has the information needed, we also communicate with the K-8s, we do have a lot of student data, so to make sure we have every child built really in place. The counselor, we meet with the students individually, go over what their options are and what their prerequisites are, if you want to go to the course next year, or you need to take it now, or you want to date. We also have a software called Naviance that helps students to explore their options, career, college, readiness, and to make sure that they're on track with where they want to date in their years.
There's also, so there have been a number of sort of philosophical changes over the past couple of years around that access for all students. Because the student that you described, Michael, is, that's sort of like the bane of public education, you know, making sure that you reach out to those children. How do you provide access? How do you provide the opportunities? And how do you stand in when the parent is absent or, you know, the student has a different experience? So, one of the, one of the things that we looked at originally, and Mr. Santasiri went through, where we eliminated those lower tracks in Language Arts and Social Studies, because we felt that students that were coming from our K-8, were sometimes, K-8s were sometimes placed in tracks as early as fifth grade, and there was no way out of those tracks. They just, that was perpetuated through their high school experience. So, and when we looked at the lower tracks of Social Studies and Language Arts, you know, you found a disproportionate number of economically disadvantaged minority and special education students. So not, not, not something that we wanted to continue. We also are starting to break down our student-specific data to a completely different level than what we've ever done here in the past. So we have, this year, we utilized our ACT Explorer as the indicator test for ninth-grade students. We actually have it in Genesis at this point, although it's not live for everyone, but with Mr. Moore and I are working with it. We have heat maps of students, where you can actually track their specific weaknesses and strengths in what they've done in those indicator tests. And the ACT is a terrific assessment of college and career readiness. They give you a college and career readiness score. So we're starting to jive that with ninth graders, you know, right from their, right from their first experience here. We also, we brought the college board in last year, who performed an audit of the school district. And one of the things that they did was identify students on an AP readiness scale. You know, so they looked at students' PSAT scores. We had college admissions officers here working with our guidance counselors. And we identified a huge number of students that had AP potential but were not in the AP program. And then, you know, the goal at the building level was to begin to target these students and to reach out to parents and the students themselves, to get them, to encourage them to enroll. And then the development of the AP Summer Bridge Program was something that was a bookend to that, to support those students as they transitioned into more rigorous course loads. Because if you look at it, I took five years of data in my previous district, and it is clear that strength of schedule trumps GPA. Our top students, year over year, who had stronger schedules as indicated by AP and/or honors courses versus other students that had higher GPAs were selected overall to higher-tiered colleges. So if you want to be competitive, it's really about moving more students into those, you know... those, you know, higher level classes. I don't want to say more demanding because classes are all demanding based on student capacity. They should be, right? So there's a lot of work in the district to, 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 to try and make sure that we serve as adequate proxies for those students that don't have the advocacy at home.
I have a question. I went to a college that was founded and guided by Quaker principle and to encourage collaboration as opposed to competition. They just got rid of the ranking system. And I believe the county votes also don't rank their students. Was there any discussion about eliminating our ranking system altogether?
We actually discussed all of the different methodologies, and we thought going from an exact ranking system to no ranking system was a very large change, that was something that we wanted to kind of move at a little bit slower pace. The deciles offers the opportunity to give input to the colleges, but in a way that the record numbers is like, you know, you don't have an exact number. If your number 49 in your classroom, your first decile, you can still have an A-plus average because of the high level of achievement. So we discussed every single possibility, percentile ranking, and then there's places that don't have any ranking. We also will continue to offer the option of not showing rank on transfers. We do that now. And some students do opt not have it shown. And we're going to continue to offer that. The only ranking we were proposing to show to colleges would be the one you decided, and, you know, it could just continue to be an ongoing conversation.
What else?
All right.
One of the very encouraging things, among a wealth of encouraging things I heard, was the early access to AP honors programs for the non-learning center academy students. But it brought up a question. In the past, have we had more demand than availability for our incoming freshmen for AP courses?
We've added additional AP courses that didn't already be in place in previous years. AP courses are typically given in junior senior year, but we've actually, the trend over the last few years has been, just to stay alive, which has been, students who are in the middle schools are taking courses, for example, Algebra I, and getting great, whereas these two kids would wait until you got to high school to take Algebra I. And now that's more and more common. You'll see that maybe, which gives students, where you're now further along in their education. So you see, really the content area is moving now to the middle school, which is really bringing students to us at a higher level of readiness, more more than in the fourth grade, and getting them on par for AP courses earlier in their high school career. That's happening across the board to all students. And it's really gives students an opportunity, and high school takes courses work that they previously had encountered at the non-college.
And Mr. Lawson, one of, one of the other structural changes has been, traditionally the scheduling process had been at, at, at an individual level, at the building levels in terms of making a determination to run a course or not. And, and sometimes there were, there were set numbers for AP courses that either were yay or nay. And one of the things that I've asked the building principals to do the past couple of years is that if they have student interest, it's got to be vetted through, through my office before we make that determination if we're not going to run that course as well. For an example, you might have 17 students that want to take AP, and AP psychology. I'm just throwing that out. They, we have a lot more than 17. Sorry, Mr. Moses. And, and if the cutoff had been this arbitrary number of 20, you know, now we know that, well, perhaps there's other students out there that we can drum up some support, and that's not just shut the door right away. But that had been, you know, sort of a, a process that had been expected. And so we've altered that a little bit from, you know, looking at it from structural.
Right. This, this struck home because I went through the math wars going from eighth grade to, to freshman with the, the prereqs of, of algebra. And was it Algebra I, Algebra II? And that was a nightmare for me to understand. But the availability is, is, I'm trying to get my head around this. Basically, you're telling me that there really were no traditional AP offerings in freshman and sophomore years? Just in?
There were honors.
There were some.
There were honors.
Honors.
There were honors. Definitely honors.
Yeah, there was no honors history freshman year, except for the learning center. No honors English freshman, except for...
Right. I'm talking outside learning center, yeah.
And also, we have more eighth graders today who are far more educated about the diplo process, that go and take full advantage of that process and go and take geometry in the summer so they can start at Algebra II.
Right.
They are doing this in droves. I mean, they are really, I mean, Jeff, you probably, Mr. Moore, you probably tested the number of diplos that you receive on a, on a daily basis from the eighth graders. It's, it's really a system that's working and is still in the, in process of really, you know, jumping.
Yeah, it sounds, sounds like it. Sounds great. Thank you. Thank you.
Jen, on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank you and your committee for all their hard work and research.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I'll, I'll continue. I've got a number of, so a, a few items. It's been a, it's been a while since we, since we met, and we are hot and heavy in the end of the year celebratory mode. So there are a number of things that are taking place throughout the district, some really wonderful events. And I'll just go through a, a few that I've, I've had the, the privilege of attending over the past few weeks. We had a fashion show from Analpan in Coltsneck High School on May 14th. That was phenomenal, but well, well attended by district staff as well, who participated in the fashion show with the students, which I thought were just, was just terrific. Our spring concerts throughout the district have been occurring. I believe that Marlboro's is the only one, one left, and that's Wednesday evening. Everyone else has, has gone. And our, our music programs in the school district are absolutely second to none. It's like being at, at a professional show. We also honored our teachers of the year. Monmouth County does something very wonderful and different than, than other counties. They, they ask the, the schools to nominate a teacher of the year each year from each of the buildings. And they take them out to a wonderful lunch at the Shadow Brook. And a number of our state legislators show up to that and attend that. And it was, it's, it's always a terrific day. Dr. Kegler and I go. And it's nice that they recognize each individual teacher. And, and I think that it's also a nice day in a, in a district this size where we have 900-plus teachers. It's an opportunity for me as superintendent of schools to actually sit down with six of them and have lunch and, and have general conversation for a couple hours. And it's, it's, it's a terrific day. So I just like, we put this up on our website, but the teachers wore Lenore Cottonale from Coltsneck High School, Cara Daly from Marlboro High School, Catherine Lyons from Freehold High School, Jose Manuel from Analpan High School, Alan McTagg from Howell High School, and Dr. Aru Principay from Freehold Township High School. So those were our, our teachers of the year. Hats off to them. Coltsneck High School mock trial team, if you haven't seen this on our website, take a look. Nikkel State and recorded the competition. They were the county tournament champions this year. How they remember what they remember to participate in mock trials is, is unbelievable. Monmouth County, the Count Basie Theater in Red Bank, each year honors the, the, the best performances, student performances from all the Monmouth County high schools. This past year, the, the evening was on May 22nd, and Freehold Regional High School District students were nominated for 29 awards. And we cleaned house on actually winning those awards, led by Howell High School, I think who, who took home double-digit awards this year. And shockingly, not for set design and singing in the rain, because they made it rain, which I, I still don't know how they weren't nominated for that. But it, it, what they do over the course of the evening is they have the best performances from across the county, and they do acts from their, from their plays and their musicals. And it is, it's a high-energy night. I, you know, I went there, it was one of those nights where I was, you know, tired. I was lost in Red Bank. I couldn't find parking. I'm like, oh gosh, where am I? I'd never been there. And I sat down and you're, you're sitting with the kids, you know. So before they're, they're, they're in costume, they get called up for their performance. Everybody's screaming. It's like a rock show. I felt like I should have a lighter, like standing up like this or something. But it was, it's a, it was a terrific, a terrific event. And, and our students, when they won their awards, represented our school district in such a phenomenal manner. There was no, they didn't get up there and take the microphone and say, "Oh," you know, like I'm totally overwhelmed. And they, they said, you know, they were very, very thoughtful in, in their thank yous and generous to the Board of Education and the school district. And it, I was, I was proud to be sitting in, in that audience. So it was, it was a terrific night. As, as happens almost every year, Freehold Township was, I think, in the state finals for the consumer ball, right, Ms. Higley? I think that's third year in a row. There's a, there's a dynasty brewing there. So nice statewide recognition once again from Freehold Township. On May 30th, the ROTC awards occurred at Coltsneck High School. It was the fifth year in a row that the ROTC program's been designated distinguished program, which I think is a phenomenal accomplishment. We also had the F-PAC showcase at Howell High School on that same evening, where students perform a lot of original work. And, and if you want a cheap night out, go get tickets for that because some of these kids are phenomenally talented. We had our spring games at Marlboro High School last Friday afternoon. And what that is, our school district does a phenomenal job of providing opportunities for some of our most significantly learning disabled students over the course of the year. We do a Cinco de Mayo dance. We, we do a Valentine's Day dance. And one of the other events that we hold is a spring games every year at Marlboro High School. And the kids come down and, and around the field. It was very, very hot. But it was, it's a wonderful day. And it's nice to make sure that we are providing opportunities for some of our students to socialize in ways that they're not always able to outside of the, the schoolhouse. And finally, on May, May 23rd, I had the good fortune of presenting down at the NJSA Spring Conference with Jeff Moore. We, we went through our strategic planning process for a group of about 35 or 40 other superintendents and the such. And the capstone to that was one of the professional strategic planners came up to us after the, after the presentation and said that he had stolen some of our ideas. So I'll take that as a compliment. Thank you.
Next up, we have public.
Can I, I'm sorry. I have two questions.
Yeah.
And Mr. Sampson, I don't know if you got a chance to see it. I had one question about Common Core and one about teacher evaluations.
Nothing loaded about either of those topics.
Did you have a chance to look at that article I told you about?
I did, from the Wall Street Journal.
Right. And so basically, for the other board members, there was this op-ed in the Wall Street Journal about the Common Core. And it basically had given Massachusetts as an example, how they were merrily on their way, everything was great. And then some elements of Common Core came into it, and things started going downhill. And I know we've discussed before, I think the state of Indiana, for one, has maybe passed some legislation to try to get at a Common Core. And I just wanted your opinion of, you know, what is the current state of implementation, you know, whether you want to talk about the state of New Jersey, the United States, whatever you feel comfortable with talking about.
A couple of things. So, so, so I'll, I'll take the Common Core piece first. The, the implementation of the, the acceptance of the Common Core standards and the implementation of the Common Core, I believe that 44 states have, have signed on to that. There is criticism on both political fronts. So there's, the Obama administration has been criticized of this sort of federal top-down approach to education. A lot of groups, that, that's gaining momentum in, in, in many states, that it's a federal intrusion on states' rights and, and ability to establish local curriculum. I think that that misses some of the more nuanced elements of the, the Common Core. You know, I think there's, there are, I think we are confusing standardized test with standards. And I think the danger with the Common Core that states are guilty of is that they're rushing at an unbelievably rapid pace to develop assessments that measure the effective implementation of the Common Core standards when we haven't even effectively implemented the Common Core standards. So I think we're, I think if we're not, if we don't pause and get off that speedboat a little bit, that, that we are, we're going to be looking at some difficulties. And I think Kentucky is a state that is, is a prime example. You know, they went through their first round of Common Core assessments and, you know, scores had dropped by like 30 percentage points in terms of who was proficient. But there's a lot of thoughtful folks that I respect in, in education that I think have done a very good job of sort of detailing the positives of the Common Core and while also recognizing the difficulties of what we need to look out for. Grant Wiggins is one on his blog. You know, he, he uses the example that, it's been left to the states, I think he uses the example of Mississippi, right? So Mississippi in their state test had something like, you know, 70% of their students were proficient. I'm throwing numbers out there, but when they, when they looked at their NAEP numbers, which is a national number, only like 20% of their students were proficient compared, Doug. And so his, his, his criticism was, hey, you know, shouldn't a state like Mississippi be held to the same standards as New Jersey and enough of the shell game of what students can or cannot do? The Massachusetts example is interesting because Massachusetts was really the, sort of the, the forefront in terms of a state that did it well with the adoption of their own state standards and which the Common Core was supposed to have been modeled after. It wasn't supposed to sort of, you know, disrupt Massachusetts. It was, you know, the Common Core used Massachusetts as an example of what you can do. The, I think the, the group that wrote that Wall Street Journal op-ed, which are particular think tack, think tank with some particular political perspectives, I think that they linked a drop in student performance in Massachusetts with the implementation of the Common Core standards that I don't think really bears when you look at it. Because I think the, the, the number of students who are taking the SAT and the such in Massachusetts actually jumped dramatically in the past couple of years by like 10 percentage points. So you would assume if 10% more of your kids are suddenly taking the SATs, there might be a slight drop. But Massachusetts' SAT numbers are still better than New Jersey's. And we're in the top, you know, three or four in, in the nation. The bigger problem, and, and there's been a lot, you know, the National Council for Teachers of English, the NEA, you know, they've all come out and said, "We, we believe in the impetus of the Common Core to, 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 you know, hold our, our students accountable for a, an improved experience nationwide. We don't, we don't agree with the rush to put these high-stakes tests and tie that to the measurement of, of that effectiveness." So I think that's the, that's the danger of the Common Core, that as we implement these PARC assessments, and we do it quickly, and there's suddenly online assessments, and there's, there's, you know, some real stakes attached to them in terms of kids' performance, but also teachers' livelihoods. That's, that's, that's a, that's a concern. Other big myth with Common Core is that literature as we know it goes out the window. I think that that's a, a very narrow view of the Common Core. I think that the Common Core speaks to literacy across the curriculum and, and the emphasis on informational text. And I think what some folks have, have interpreted that as is that, you know, we're not going to read Huck Finn any longer. And, and that's really not how, how, what is supposed to play out, is that when you have your sort of literature base, that, you know, you would have some non-fictional text, informational text that would accompany that. And a lot of that comes out of Doug Reeves' research. You know, Doug Reeves is a brilliant educator, I think, who's done a, a ton of research of how, how, what, what sorts of experiences promote academic achievement. And one of the things that he found was that students who, who engage in informational text analysis and persuasive, you know, writing from that and argument from that do well in school. And, you know, he's able to sort of correlate that with the amount of informational text that students are exposed to and, you know, increased academic achievement. So there's the, you're going to find detractors on, on both sides. For us, you know, I, I think it's important to own the interpretation of the Common Core here, you know. So you have your So you have your anchor standards. We've spent an awful lot of time in our, in our, in our curriculum writing process and, and our credit, Mr. Moore and, and Ms. Meckman and the curriculum team, you know, who've really been very thoughtful about making sure that we, we, we determine as a school district what we feel is, is important for our students and not, not having that externally imposed on us and, and owning that within the standards. Standards are just guides. You know, they're not the, they don't, they don't control the, the teaching and learning in the classroom. So I, I think that the interpretation is, my God, I'm going on long here, I'm sorry. But I think that the interpretation is of that, that somehow, that's out there, that those standards suddenly impose this, you know, this sort of stratified teaching and learning in our, in our, in our schools is, is, is a false pretense.
Now, I have one other question. You could give a very short answer.
I'll try. Complicated.
Basically, before teacher evaluations were dealt with, with the state, there were some pile of programs out there. So I think I remember someplace in Burlington County basically had this evaluation model that they were testing out. And it was basically three pillars. One was student test scores. The second one was observations of the teacher. And then the third one was like some extraneous ranking based upon something. I don't know, field trips or the teacher being nice. I don't know what it was, right? So in that particular model, there was three pillars of how the teacher was going to be evaluated. Right now, are there definitive pillars in the state of New Jersey that are set in stone?
Yes. The, the, you know, so the, under the Achieve New Jersey Act, you know, the, the district has, the, the state has said that teacher observation, teacher evaluation, I should say, will consist of no more than, you know, they allow it up to 50% student test scores and then it's, it's, it's a percentage of 15% that are locally developed goals, which we, we would term as SGOs. And then there's instructional practice. Now, what the, which is the teacher's actual, what they're doing in the classroom, their, you know, their, their strategies, their pedagogical approaches, their lesson planning and the such. The state set the number originally at 35% student assessment and that applies to about 15% of the teachers in the state who are teaching grades four through eight, language arts and mathematics, because those are the only grades that have some test associated with them that the state can then use as a barometer. The NJASK, which is, if you know anything about the NJASK, the NJASK has a, well, we don't, we don't see the error because the state doesn't release that, but I believe it's somewhere around nine points is the range. So a student who gets a 200, it could really be a 209. 191 could really be a 200. And we make all these determinations off of these numbers that are wrong to begin with. But I digress. The, the state has set the cut this year for year one of implementation at, it was 35% originally student test scores. I think they knocked that down to 30%. And then there's up to 15% local health assessments and the rest is teacher instructional practice. So those are the, the pillars. And what each school is supposed to do for each teacher prior to November is to, in tested areas, develop one student growth objective that will fill that, for us at Freehold Regional High School District, 15% component. But since we are a non-tested area, because at high school, there's no, there's only the HESPA, it's not aligned to any particular grade level, what we, our teachers need to have two SGO student growth objectives that will be mutually established by the building principal or supervisor with, with the teacher. So that, those are the, those are the state expectations of, of what, what we're supposed to do. There's some general guidance on that, that you, you know, the state is encouraging departmental and/or larger SGOs that, that serve as an umbrella over larger groups of teachers. Quite candidly, if, if we don't do something like that, I'm not quite sure how we're even going to manage all of this as we implement the new system on top of these other requirements that we, we have to monitor. One district in North Jersey broke it down by teacher contact. And there's changes to observations, you know, some are, you can now do shorter duration observations more frequent. They separated categories of teachers, one, years one and two, years three and four. So now 10 years, four years. It used to be three. And then, you know, five-plus years. And one, one district's, I thought, did a nice job of couching this, what they call occurrences, where you have to be in the classroom formulate, formally documenting something in the district. September 1 will increase from 1,200 contacts to 2,100 contacts. I can tell you ours will shoot through the roof as, as well. So all of that will be interesting on managing. What, from, from our end as practitioners, we have asked repeatedly for some more data from the pilot districts. We have 30 or so pilot districts that are a year or two into this. We haven't seen the data on how these rankings affect a teacher's final summative evaluation. You know, that's, that's what we'd like to see, what the trends are. We, we haven't been able to see that, that information. The waiver from No Child Left Behind allowed the state another year to implement, but they chose to ramp that up by one year. So there's a lot of folks out there. There's some, there's some pushing at the local level from some legislators to, to request an additional year to sort of get this right. So a lot of, a lot of change to, you know, teacher evaluation, Common Core implementation, PARC testing, sort of trilogy of, of change that's afoot in public ed.
Next, we have public participation. We have two names. Matt Revneck?
Yes, it is Matt Revneck. I live on Pine Tree Lane here in Alabama. Actually, I came to speak about some of them before I do that. I'm a teacher of 25 years up in Edison at JCP Stevens High School. We're considered to be one of the top public high schools in New Jersey. We eliminated class rank a number of years ago. I think it's a good move because of the competition of our students. Class rank is available to colleges upon their request, and the only class rank that's given is for the salutary and valedictorian purposes. Students, parents have no access to it. I also think it's a good move. We just moved our algebra and geometry program down to the middle school. In fact, I was on the committee. I teach the AP and advanced calculus classes. We ever got 88% that get a bowl or five on the AP. And one of the reasons why we moved this was so that students don't have to double up in math to, you know, take our, what we call our super calculus. So it's more opportunity for the students. And totally I'm glad that what these people all just presented, I think it's a good move. And I also agree with you, Dr. Sampson, I believe it is.
No doctor in front of that name, Doug. Lot of, lot of water under the bridge, yeah.
I'm also actually first by the president of our association. And in fact, I was down with the State Board of Education about a month ago down in Ocean City, New Jersey. They don't know what they're doing on anything yet. Nothing is set, so things are changing by the day. So I think I really appreciate what you said, the high stakes, not only in terms of students, but also staff. Okay, so I just wanted to mention that. What I'm really here for, however, is I have two daughters that have been part of the Alpen High School softball program. One who graduated last year, one who's a freshman this year. Instead of having a whole group of people come out, I tell them, "I'll take the ball and address, you know, the board first." For years, we've been asking for dugouts for our softball field, and for years, we have not gotten them. There's a few issues I want to bring up with that. We are the only school in the Freehold Regional District that does not have dugouts for our softball team. I'm also a baseball parent, have been for over 25 years, baseball softball. I don't even know if there's another high school in the state that doesn't have dugouts. Unless you're playing at like a public park or something where they're not supplied. Just about every other school I can think of has dugouts. One of the reasons why we ask for it is, a couple actually. Number one, our children have expensive equipment. It's not like when I played years ago, you know, you got a bat for 15 bucks, 20 bucks. Now they're $2, $300 for bats, gloves that are in the hundreds dollar range, you know, spikes, et cetera. Especially in the case of a time of weather, those things get wet. Gloves get wet, you can almost throw them out and have to go buy a new one. In addition to that, there's nowhere to store the bags while they're on the field playing. The bags are left open, people walk by, it would be very easy to grab a $300 bat and walk away with it. Not only for our team, but the opposing teams. Because actually, on the other side, closer to the parking lot, although we are pretty far down, you know, from the parking lot area. So that's one issue. Another issue, and it actually happened this year, we had a parent go sit on the bench because the bench is wide open. In fact, it caused problems. I also coached, by the way, for a number of years at the high school in JCP Stevens. And the last thing you want is a parent who's not happy about the child's playing time getting in an argument with a coach during a game. I've actually seen it on the traveling circuit. I haven't seen it at high school, but it really opens itself to a bad situation. Having a dugout would be a natural way to separate the team from the spectator, from the parent. One of the rules I have when I coach, when you're on that field, you're mine. And if your parent needs to be addressed in some way, I will call them over, for example, in the case of an injury. But other than that, the child and the player, athlete should be separated from the spectator, from the audience. It's basically a safe haven for the coach and the players. All right? Another issue, and Coach Hoffman, who's been at Alpen now for two years, has one of, has run a wonderful fundraising activity, actually this is his third year. For the first two years, it was for the coach, Jim Jackson, who was fighting cancer. This year, it was for two children from, I believe it was Robbinsville. And it's embarrassing to have eight other teams come down, actually, I believe this year it was 11 teams. And the facilities are really inactive. So we're here for them to store their belongings, there's no separation, et cetera. The final thing, and I really don't want to have to go this route and go there, but I also believe this is violation of Title IX. 1972, Title IX was enacted, we just celebrated the 40th anniversary last year. There are three basic components of Title IX. The first two criteria you are definitely in compliance with, and most of the third one. However, one of them deals with facility quality. And again, it's always equity in terms of male, females, athletes and sports. And I do believe that, you know, there is basically a violation of Title IX here because it's all the boys' teams. And although most of the girls' teams are considered to have it, Alpen does not have it. It's something I would request that I know a number of years ago. Like I said, I have a daughter that's graduated now. I've been with this program for five years. I have another four years left. And I'd love to see it happen to my daughter, but even if not going forward, I'd like to see, you know, this finally taken care of. So I asked the board if it's a matter of putting out bids for having it done, you know? It would be appreciated. I don't know if your budget's been already proposed. I know it's, I believe yours has been moved to November, and Addison's already just moved it on. We did move it. So if it hasn't been, that you consider, you know, putting a line item in and tap your improvements or whatever, have this finally taken care of. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Matt, I'm not speaking for the board now, but just for myself as the next coach, I totally agree with you and we will find out what's going on.
Thank you very much.
I have one con, can I have a comment? I believe that Howell High School was the last to get a dugout for the girls. I think only because contractors, maybe some of the fathers were contractors, and I think they donated their services, I don't know how many years ago, and they did fundraising. I think that's the only reason why we got it over there. I mean, I don't, you know, I'm just... Right? Is that how it was done? I re, I just, I mean, I'm talking about, I mean, it could have been, you know, 2,000...
If that would be the only avenue to get them, then we will raise the funds if we have to. And I do believe, actually, we may have one or two contractors, you know, players on the team. So, you know, again, I don't know what the legality is.
Yeah, before we go that route, we'll, we'll digest it, take a look. You know, it's, it's, it's a legitimate concern. Let us, let it percolate a little bit, though, in terms of how we've gotten to this point and what, what needs to be done before, before I start asking you to put a hammer in your hand and come on down on Sunday.
The other question I, because that's actually been brought up, and again, as a person that's involved with, you know, schools and school. I don't know what the legality is if something was to happen. It's not done through a contracted means. In other words, if I'm not a licensed contractor and something's happening, hopefully something happens.
I, I think even if you are, the, the litigious nature will find its way to us, whether it was contractor or not.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Jim Sage.
Jim Sage, Mollboro. Long time no see. I see you. I've got a question, and I'm going to do it for the first time, which I don't think I've ever did here, and that's to thank and congratulate this board on gridding this district of law firm, Schwartz, Simon, Edelstein &amp; Kelsen. All I can say is, what's it so long? There were many red flags with this law firm, and I'm going to reiterate what many of us know, prior state matter, where that law firm indicated that Mr. Watson was entitled to keep his bogus, phony documents with him. That should have raised the biggest flag. The coordinator of special projects, no public hearing was conducted as mandated by education law. The Flynn case, the teacher from Freehold Borough, where he was suspended without pay, neither being on, which was against, again, Title 18, for being suspended without being on tenure charges for being a lackey by Monmouth County Grand Jury. The Taddy Greif case, the law firm got involved in a matter that was between Miss Greif and the counsel on higher education. Why they got involved in this matter, I don't know. And I don't even, I think it's still pending. I don't know that, that this has been ever resolved. The Taddy Greif case, are you familiar with that one? Has it been resolved? No. Are we still going to pay this law firm for that, for that matter? Again, it's between Miss Greif and the counsel on higher education. We should have never got involved in that. And of course, the anonymous bloggers, need I say anymore with that? The Esri Park Press has reported that the firm has been linked with their federal tax liabilities, and the Lake Board of Education believes that they may have been overbilled. And they, like this district, got rid of them, that firm as well. As you know, I overquite few bills, legal bills. And they practically bill us for everything. A staple, a paperclip, a facsimile, photocopies, right here. But what I never understood, and I was going to ask this in the past, what is an administrative fee? They don't go into detail with administrative fee. Every bill is approximately $1,000 for an administrative fee. So since the board approves these bills, can a member of the board tell me what is an administrative fee that you approve? A member of the board doesn't want to? This is to the members of the board who approve these bills. Does anybody know what an administrative fee is?
If I could, Mr. President, you know, the board relies on the administration, namely me, to review those bills prior to presenting it to them for payment. The administrative fee is one of the provisions of their, was one of the provisions of their contract. I can tell you that under our current legal contract, that all costs are detailed, so there is no standing administration fee, administrative fee. So some bills have some, most bills don't, that we've seen recently here since we've moved to the commagno law group. So that's, that's the history of the administrative fee.
Well, having said that, you feel you've been overbilled by the board?
You know, we've, we've taken steps to, to look at that, none of which I can share with you in public, but we're certainly very aware of all, all of the costs associated with running the district and, and we're taking the, the steps that are necessary to address those.
So it's possible having eternal one on this, ma'am? You can answer that?
Mr. Sage, I'm speaking in, in general. All of them, all of the bills that come through my office are examined very closely.
Well, I would hope with their history that we have some sort of look at, at this firm and maybe it's our time to act. Thanks.
Next up, we have the agenda. H1, the three...
Yes, just before, before, I'd like to-
Okay, I'd like to move the agenda in one shot. Okay? Motion?
Second.
Ron? Okay? Discussion?
Yes, one item. Tabling Mr. Marquez's resignation, is that tabled to executive session, tabled to next meeting?
It's possibly tabled to later this evening, and if not, until next meeting.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Saying none? Mr. Boyce? Mr. Asatola?
Yes, as amended by Sean Boyce.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Cipara?
Yes.
Mr. Mazza?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes, as amended by.
Doctor Esposito.
I'd like to ask Dr. Teresa Taylor to stand. Teresa, how are you? Teresa is our new supervisor of special education for Marlborough High School. Dr. Taylor comes to us from Monroe Public Schools. We spoke to basically the entire administrative team over there, raved about her, has an incredibly varied background that we think will be a unique fit for us here at Freehold Regional High School, and we're honored to have you, Dr. Taylor. So thank you. Jennifer Williams, I'd ask you to stand up, please. Jennifer, Ms. Williams is a guidance counselor presently at Freehold Township High School. She's been with us for over a decade, came through a tough interview process as the choice, as the next supervisor of guidance for Freehold Township High School. Jennifer does a lot of the little things already to get her foot in the administrative door. We think it's going to be a seamless transition, and we're happy to have you, Ms. Williams. So thank you.
Okay, new business? Old business?
I'm here. I'm Jessica Olester, Central Asian for school.
I am on the agenda.
Oh, wait, what is?
I apologize, Jessica, but, um, I just.
Jessica, it could be a problem, wait.
Hey, it's on the agenda.
Oh, here.
Yes, it is.
Here it is, page five. Sorry.
She's there. Welcome to Colsnack.
Give her a standing, something.
Thank you. Welcome aboard, Jessica. I apologize for.
I hope you didn't think that something happened backdoor there.
Is there anybody else out there I don't know about?
Any new new business? Any business? All right, before we adjourn, I want to remind the board we have to go back into executive session.
You're going to need a motion. A motion is to go back into executive session to discuss personnel matters. Action may be taken.
That's sent by Mr. Boyce.
Hi.
All right, thank you for coming.